And got the mashworks. Thank you.
So our Solarize campaign is going well. We have the third of three workshops tonight, or after this. About 100 people attended during the first two workshops. And we have about 63 inquiries to have people have bids on their roofs as of this morning when I called Sunlight Solar. So of those, about a quarter of them don't qualify right off the bat. We've tried really hard to get education out about what makes for a good home, so we don't waste the installers' time. So we still have some junk inquiries, but for the most part, they look pretty good and promising. We've been doing, and will continue to do, outreach in every way we know how. Community events, and flyers, and tabling, postcards, and social media. Our next steps are, we would like to run it past the council if we can extend the deadlines for signing up to be part of the Solarize program, and a separate deadline for signing a contract to be extended by a week each.
A week each?
Yeah.
So it was September 29th, so you're saying just pushing a week into October?
Yeah, so September 29th was the date to sign up to qualify for the Solarize discount, and October 16th is the original deadline to sign a contract in order to get that discount. So just make both of them a week later.
And Sunlight thinks if we make them both a week later, they can still get them installed in time to get people the tax credits and all of that?
Yeah, they're on top of it. It seems like they're really prompt about contacting people, and they have the capacity to get the systems installed.
And they actually recommended that we take that step and extend them a week. I want to clarify, in case anybody misinterprets this, we can't extend the state's energy tax credit. It goes away at the end of the year. We're just saying what, we will still have time to do the work we need to do, and the contractor to do before then.
And if folks do that, and they do it before the end of this year, then they have qualified for the state's tax credit.
As long as they're installed by the end of March.
Right, as long as they're installed by the end of March, as long as they've applied before the end of this year, and it's all gone through, so on and so forth, right?
Right.
Yeah. And am I remembering correctly, that's a three-year tax credit?
Four years.
Okay.
Is the extension because we have just one vendor, and it's difficult to make these deadlines for me? Or what's the point of it?
No, from our perspective, we want to get more people involved for the program, and we want to have the opportunity to do some more outreach. We don't have as many as we had hoped by this point.
How many of the people that sort of signed up online to say, yes, we're interested, have not shown up so far to one of the...
So there are about 200 people who signed the, or entered the information onto our website. And there have so far been about 100 people at the workshops. So that list of 200 people, we've been emailing and contacting pretty regularly to keep them informed.
Well, and you told me they don't have to come to a workshop, right?
They don't.
They can get a quote or an estimate of that coming to a workshop.
Yeah, and we've been getting a steady trickle of those too, people who go online and just requested bid online. We prefer they come to a workshop, so we don't waste the installers' time with people who don't have feasible groups, but they're totally welcome to do that. And actually, after this last workshop, we're still going to be pushing people towards that website.
So I don't see a problem with extending it.
Yeah, and if Solar thinks that they can actually, yeah, shorter, just a week.
And so would you have another workshop, or would tonight still be the last workshop?
No, I think this would be it. I think we've kind of used up the resources of our partners in some ways. But still, between the online capability and just Sunlight Solar's willingness to meet with anybody, anybody who does want to get involved will still have the opportunity.
And of the, so you said 63 requested estimates, about a quarter don't qualify. Do we have any sense of how many of the remain, so that leaves whatever, late upper 40s that do qualify, how many are really going to pursue? Do we contract?
You don't really know.
There are a lot of factors. The ones who didn't qualify, there are actually only 12 that didn't qualify right off the bat. The roofs were too small, or they were shaded by a tree, and the installers can see that immediately, and then stop there. A lot of what I've heard, a lot of feedback I've been getting from people, is that they have a great house, and they would like to do it, but they don't have the financing. So we don't know what percentage of people do have a great house and can't do it anyway. We'll find out soon.
Sounds great. Anything else you could talk about?
Thank you. We'll go over there and get ready for another one.
Thanks.
All right. Construction excise tax.
I just texted her, and I said, hey, are you up? Is she here? You went for it. Thanks.
That wasn't supposed to go that fast.
You guys told me I was on a schedule tonight, so.
I thought it was solarization?
Yeah.
They're just breezing through.
Oh my God, sorry. Boy. All right, well, you have the staff report. I was talking to a partner on the phone. Okay, my apologies. Let me get my item. Okay, so I'm here, back here, to discuss sort of the last elements. Can I get a copy of the staff reports? For some reason, I can't. To talk about the construction excise tax and the next steps related to that, I have it on the council agenda to come before you, or for a resolution to come before you at the October 3rd session. But some last touches that, based on the previous discussion on the construction excise tax, was, thank you, relation to sort of the fine details of the 1% in relation to commercial and industrial. I think the residential is pretty clearly and straightforward in terms of the legislative details that Senate Bill 1533 put forth. So those can't change. They're pretty standard. What I did hear from someone at the state that they're thinking of having monies generated from the CET for the residential go back to the communities. They had three tracks that they could take, which was to look at the general fund that it would go into and just allocate developer incentive city, or statewide. But then, given that not too many communities are doing that right now, that they should think about having that generated income tax, or tax, sorry, go back to the community that it was, that it originated from, which I would be in support of. I'm sure we would all be supportive of, because it would mean that not only that the commercial and industrial tax that we would want to apply to it would be ours to use in the way that we're defining, but also a bigger chunk of what would be collected by the state, Oregon Community and Housing Services. Another component that I wanted to talk to you about is that I did do outreach via email, an email blast to developers, real estate brokers, nonprofit developers, and anyone pretty much in my database of contacts to notify them of this construction excise tax. I felt an obligation to put it out there, especially since this is going to impact the development community in some way, just to gauge their, any comments that they might have in relation to it. So I heard from the county. The county wanted a clarifying, a clarifier on how we're defining county SDCs and how this program would be affected, or would affect that. And so I explained to them that we could use the program funds to pay off county SDCs if needed, but it's not necessarily a requirement of anything. And that's just, I think, on a case-by-case basis that we would apply that. That was one question. A second question, or not a question, a comment that I received from a nonprofit developer is that it was great that the city is pursuing this. There aren't too many other cities that are looking at this, and they think this is a critical time to meet affordable housing objectives and to really truly try to leverage resources in that, in that direction. I did hear back from one commercial real estate broker who said that this would be to the detriment of the development community, that if we're trying to create more development, this could offset that. But I think, given that I sent it to over, I don't know, 75 people in that database and only heard from three, really one that was against it conceptually, I'm not too concerned that the development community would be upset by the city moving forward in this direction. So I'm prepared to answer any questions, but I think the only thing that I did find out that was a question was whether or not the administrative fee could be at the amount that I had put in originally, which I think was 25%. It does need to be 4%. So I accounted for that, and then put in the other 25% into housing, for workforce housing. So those are the main changes that I made based on the conversation that we had last, and then wanted to just gauge, are we on the right track? Is this good for a consent resolution to move this tax forward?
I have a question regarding what you mean by, the state is deciding that they, it will return the money versus keeping it. I guess I have no...
So I received an email in relation to the CET, through that mass email, from someone who's well-connected with the state. The state has been trying to figure out how they would apply the 50% that they, or 35% that they receive as part of this, and how to allocate that. And three options that they had was to either keep the money and distribute it statewide, keep the money and do it by region, by sort of generating region, or to take the money and give it back to the community that it came from. They're opting more for that third option.
That sounds great.
Well, I, yeah, I didn't even understand that they took the money.
They do, yeah.
This 35%, I mean, it talks about, there's like these ORS sections, but I didn't realize it meant they took that 35% back.
Yes, they do, and only under the residential tax.
Yeah, and that's where I guess I was confused too.
That one was by state enabling legislation that dictated all of that breakout for the residential. On the commercial and industrial breakout, they didn't define anything. They didn't tell you how much you could assess or tax. They didn't tell you how it needed to be spent. They didn't say anything, because their primary focus area was on housing. So they were only wanting to tap the housing development piece. But they did give cities an opportunity to tax commercial and industrial. And in our conversations last, we said we wanted to tax and have it be equitable across commercial, industrial, and residential development at 1%. So we were able to outline how we wanted to spend that tax coming from, generating from the commercial, industrial.
So I was a little confused by the 50%, where you discussed the 50% on page WS3. You're quoting from the state law, and it's all about paying in lieu fee. That's really about inclusionary zoning, right? That's not about, I mean, how do you pay an in lieu fee to a construction excise tax? That's about if somebody's required to build units, I presume, under inclusionary zoning, they could pay a fee instead.
Right, and since we're not using the 1533 Section A that speaks to the IZ, that section wouldn't apply to us. It would be the second bullet, which would be the, we could use it to pay for proportional fee waivers, or reductions in the fees, system development charge write-down, or other finance-based incentives. So that second bullet outlines more of what we would use the program tax for.
Okay. I mean, I see that, those subbullets, but it's still, that second bullet talks about an in lieu fee, which I found confusing in the whole thing.
And I think those are options that we could take, but we don't have to.
Right, but what, I mean, the point she made, what's the in lieu fee of a tax?
Right, yeah. Perhaps there's a community benefit that we might be able to leverage, and that would be the in lieu, but I think we wouldn't go for that. We would just do the developer incentives, and that comes to the city. So we get to decide how that gets used, that fund, that tax fund, if you will.
So there would be an in lieu fee for this program?
If you guys decide that you don't want that, we don't have to. It's not a requirement. We could decide right now that that...
Can you just clarify what the in lieu fee is, and how it relates to the program?
I would think that it's, instead of paying the tax, the 1% on the property valuation, that they would pay a fee in lieu. And it could be anything from perhaps the 1%, but it would be for something specific to some type of development, right?
That they build or whatever.
Like, we can ask them, for instance, I could think of one example, as long as we don't get into issues related to Nexus, legal issues. If we wanted to have a plaza built, we could say, we would forfeit this toward affordable housing if you paid in lieu this fund to build this plaza for the city. I could see it being used, but that goes against the intent of this bill.
I don't think that's what that, I think that first bullet, unless I'm reading in a different place than you are.
Yeah.
ORS 197.309, Section 5C and 5D and 7Z. That's purely talking about IZ. It's got nothing to do with CET. That's purely talking about, in exchange for providing the requisite number of housing units within the multifamily structure to be sold or rented at low market rates. It's got nothing to do with us. It's got nothing. If we're not doing IZ, it doesn't relate to us.
Okay. So since we're not doing IZ, we could just remove that first bullet. That's simpler.
Yeah, I think we should go back to... Yeah, I think we should go back through and make sure that we remove everything that has to do with IZ but not CET, just to make our code as clear as possible.
And what about in that second bullet where it says it likes to pay in in lieu fee, percent, blah, blah, blah? Does that come out also?
Yeah, I have to assume that all of those, all that conversation of in lieu is to do with the IZ, not CET.
And that's really the only space you said, there's another?
Well, the whole first half of that paragraph.
First half of...
Partial fee waiver reductions. I mean, it's, I think, it must be spent falling away for tax revenue collected from residential development.
And our attorneys confirmed that we don't, we can do the CET without the IZ, that it can be seen as a separate 1533B enabling legislation outside of 1533.
It's almost like this got cut and pasted from a different section or something. Because that whole, everything after it says, per Senate Bill 1533B, CET funds must be spent in the falling way for tax revenue collected from residential development, colon, everything else seems to be about...
CET.
IZ.
IZ.
It's almost like the wrong stuff.
Well, I don't know about everything, but certainly those first two white bullets.
But though, everything else is a subsection of those.
Opposed, yeah.
So I don't know how they can relate to CET without...
Well, and then how can you speak to some of those other, or do we need to? Do those, are those part of the CET but not part of the IZ?
I'll make sure that the attorneys review the resolution to state specifically what is related to the construction excise tax and not the inclusionary zoning requirement of the bill.
Yeah, let's make sure we strip out everything to do with IZ, just so our...
Yeah, absolutely.
Our code is confusing enough with that.
And this is the enabling legislation language that I just cut and paste because it's their language, and I didn't want to add or interpret for them?
If I might, this, this language, although it was present in the IZ, is not, is something that you see in a lot, in a lot of different areas where, whether it's an SDC or a system development charge or another tax. So the, the idea behind the SDCs originally and exactions and asking builders to pay is that they could either, they can either construct things, such as a sidewalk themselves, or they can pay a fee in lieu. And so the, the fact that they could, they would be able to, you know, do some of these things, to me, is not surprising.
So they could pay a fee in lieu of paying taxes?
They could, they could pay, well, a system development charge is...
I get a system development charge. It's a very specific thing for a very specific purpose, but this, this is not that. This is a construction excise tax.
Right, so there, there's specific purposes for how those funds could be used. And then if, if one of those allowable uses was, say, a, and it was mentioned, public plaza, so I'll, I'll say it, then if they have a certain number of units, which would, at a certain cost, which would trigger a fee, or they could construct the public plaza themselves, and then they wouldn't, with the city's permission, wouldn't necessarily pay that fee. So, for instance, with something like sidewalks, you'll see a developer that either constructs the sidewalks or they pay a fee to the city, and then the city theoretically constructs the sidewalk.
Sure. Still doesn't seem to make sense of the tax.
So this is a tax, right? This is, this is discussing the tax portion of...
I mean, if you want to remove it, we can, but with taxes, if there's a nexus between the purpose of the tax and, and how the funds can be used, then generally that's all that's required.
And it's a vote of the council in order to make that decision?
It's programmatic.
Programmatic, okay.
But I still, explain to me what a fee in lieu of a tax is. Not building something instead of a tax, but a fee in lieu of a tax.
Well, the city could build that plaza and pay for the plaza.
No, but that's, that's building something instead of a tax. It's not a fee. A fee is money. A fee means money. It doesn't mean build something.
I get, all right, okay.
So a fee in lieu of a tax, it does not make sense.
It doesn't make sense. It's a theoretical matter.
There's no, no way that this paragraph makes any sense.
These are lawyers at stake, you know.
I mean, did they cut and paste this into the next bill? I'm sure they did, but it's there.
Not my bill.
It's there until someone says it shouldn't be.
I mean, I guess I could see it being to our benefit. I mean, I could see it being, giving the city a potentially more flexibility.
Yeah.
Well, but if, if it said, you may build something instead of paying your tax, that's great, but it's not offering that. It's offering them to pay a fee in lieu of the tax for us to then build something that we were going to build with, the tax.
But I guess by doing that, we could use that fee. I mean, the tax is going to go to designated, statutorily designated things. By allowing them to pay a fee in lieu of the tax, it gives us more control over what that is spent on, and it doesn't go into...
Well, is that true? Is what she just said true?
Let me, another lawyer is on that previously, so why don't I take a little look myself? But, I mean, if this language is in the bill, why is it in the bill? Probably because it was cut and pasted out of another bill, but it's in there, which means it's a tool you can use. And so whether you could require a fee in lieu instead of the tax, and that fee in lieu would be, if it's going to be less than the tax, then the developer might pay it instead. If it's going to be more, they're probably not.
Could there be a benefit to the business to pay a fee instead of a tax?
I thought the fee in lieu had to do with the inclusionary zoning and the units.
I'm 99% sure that's correct.
Because it says to pay a fee in lieu in exchange for providing the requisite number of housing units.
Within the multifamily structure.
That makes more sense to me. Like, okay, you don't want to build this number of housing units? You're going to give us extra.
That paragraph makes total sense under inclusionary zoning.
So it'll just get removed for our construction excise tax resolution?
Let's check with the state to see if there's something that we're just too stupid to understand, but I think it sounds like a cut and paste error to me.
It doesn't make sense.
It makes sense that this is the tool you would need so that someone could do, we'll call it offsite mitigation, so instead of units in that, they would pay a fee, and then units could be constructed somewhere else. I mean, that would make sense in the context of...
IZ.
IZ.
Yeah, absolutely. This totally makes sense in the context of IZ.
Right, and it doesn't, it doesn't make a, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense in, in the context of, of construction excise tax, but if it's, if it's in the state statutes, it's in the state statute. And then there's a question of what possible benefit could it be to the city, and I don't know.
Are we the first city to do this?
No.
No, well...
We're the first city to do it without IZ.
Got it, without IZ.
Although there's at least two others that are considering it.
Yeah, so we're studying. So we're catching on the errors.
Lays the new ground again.
All good.
Are there any other concerns for Alma that you guys want to express on how she's considering this for your resolution?
That's probably a big concern. I mean, I think you've done, I mean, you know, you've been to this three times on it. I think, you know, the word is out there. It's not like we're sneaking it in under anybody, you know? You did the outreach to the businesses of the development community, so I don't think that it's...
I've even spoken to the developers that are in the pipeline today. So I'm good? Great?
Yeah, so there was that, but then there was still the outstanding question. Is that a, I didn't quite catch, was that a state decision to go with Option 3 or whatever that was, or was it, that's where they're heading?
That's where they're heading.
Will we know that before we vote on that again?
I think either way, we weren't going to see that money originally, the fact that they're thinking about that, and we get to, you know, benefit from that. And this was a very normal conversation.
And this is the State Department revenue or the State Department housing?
No, so it's the Oregon Community and Housing Services, OCHS, who would be getting the 35% if the statute, or the legislation specifically states that 35% of any collective tax under this program would go straight to their budget. And they're contemplating having that money instead of just go to their general fund and service statewide efforts that they would target the city that generated the...
Is that something they have to do, rulemaking?
I have no idea. Again, it's very, it wasn't, it was a very casual conversation. It wasn't anything that had any... And it doesn't change the rest of your programming? No.
No. And that 35, wasn't that towards homeownership? Am I remembering that correctly?
Was that the 35% that's referenced in this document?
It's for programs and incentives of the city or county related to affordable housing.
Okay, so it's not...
Oh, sorry, no, no, sorry, I was reading the wrong one. 15% goes to fund homeownership, 35% goes to do other incentives. It still goes to the OCHS folks.
So 50% goes to OCHS?
Mm-hmm, about, yeah, total. But they break it out by homeownership versus developer incentives.
I mean, I think it looks good generally. I guess I don't know if it's ready for consent agenda, doing these unresolved issues. We may need it to be on regular agenda.
Okay.
It's interesting that if you add this up, it's 104%.
Well, it says the 4 comes off the top.
The 4 comes off the top.
Yeah. And then it's 50.
That would make it hard to comply with the rest of it.
Thanks, Peter.
I do what I can.
So it's really 48, 48 and 4.
All right, so I'll have it for a regular session, and we will look into this IZ-related language for payment in lieu. Great, thank you.
All right. Vertical Housing Development, no, suggestion. Amy. We're actually on time, what a shock.
Is that close enough? Yeah.
Amy's quiet. I need to be closer.
Good afternoon. So, I'm Amy Koski. I know you all now, here for Vertical Housing, another OHCS program. Before I just jump into the question before you tonight, I wanted to acknowledge I got a few questions from Councilor Beatty, make sure I answered those, and then just state one additional fact that wasn't in the staff report, that since we sent off the staff report, one taxing district has opted out. We got their notification from Clackamas Fire, and so it was after some conversation and debate, but I think, you know, they ultimately did a resolution with their board and decided to opt out. But that doesn't necessarily affect, we can move forward, we don't have to have 100%. And so what, what we're waiting for is just till October 2nd to have our official approval for the zone. And so what I'm here to ask you about, we had written into the resolution per your guidance to come back to you for local criteria, and then also make sure we had a deadline for the five-year sunset. And so I'm just formalizing that and wanting to get your approval on staff's recommendation to add a green building requirement to vertical housing project applicants, applications. And so what that means is just that, something that's actually already required in the zoning code, if people want to get extra floors for, for the building heights, they need to either meet one of, well, in downtown, it's two of three, and in the general mixed-use zone, it's one of two options to get the height bonus, which would include residential and green building. And in the downtown, it's lodging as a third option. But, so what we're proposing is not necessarily adding anything significantly new and extra, but that we would require green building and hopefully get that kind of building out of the incentive as an, as a benefit to the community.
So if they didn't go for the fifth floor, but they wanted the tax credit, they start to go, I mean, I love that. I want to back up to the fire department.
Sure.
Question. So if they're opting out of this, their money is still captured by the...
Urban renewal.
Uh, no, right?
For 70%. 70% of the buildings are within urban renewal. Those buildings will still go into urban renewal. It's 30%, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong.
Roughly, yeah.
That would be outside of the urban renewal district, where they would still collect full tax.
Okay.
Yeah, we just had our semi-annual meeting with them, and, you know, I wasn't going to try and, I mean, they'd already sent the notice at this point. I wasn't going to try and change the mind, but it does seem kind of funny. I wanted to make sure, one of the questions I had asked Amy was, did the thing that go to, that went to them say, we plan to sunset this in five years? Because if the bulk of it is in urban renewal already, and we're going to sunset it in five years, the impact on them is going to be pretty miniscule. And it did, she did, the documentation she sent around did say the, you know, that there was the five-year sunset. But, you know...
Did they also ask questions, some of the other questions that you asked, I thought were really, I mean, like you said, I mean, the tale of sort of compelling story about how much can be gained from these types of programs, and your answers were, I mean, without the development, I mean, it was about what they were getting, about 1,000, 1,200 and 4,000.
We were getting that, so they were probably getting less.
Yeah, so, but now it's, now it's generating, will be soon, 40,000. So...
We were talking about the North Main example that I had given earlier, and basically what the taxes were abated, and then, gosh, it was one, I have it right here. From 2007 to 2016, the property tax for a new project would have been approximately 1.3 million, and over that period, the property was abated 640,000, of which the city would, would have received 128,000. So that's just the city's portion of that 640.
But so 640, and I think this is lost on the community, because I hear this all the time, like, they didn't pay any taxes. Well, 640 and 1.3 million, they paid 50% of their tax.
Yeah.
You know, it was really only an abatement of 50%. So this idea, and the building was only, the property before there was a building there, was only bringing in 5,000 or 6,000 a year.
Right. So... I think that's the, that's sort of the bigger point there, is that without that development, we never would have capitalized that kind of...
Any additional taxes that we get for 10 years down the road.
Right.
So I did do a scenario like that. I had a email conversation with the chief, and I gave him an example of what that would mean for them and what kind of taxes they would be giving up, but also explaining that in the urban renewal, you're not, you wouldn't have seen them anyway. It actually would have been more of a hit on our urban renewal fund in that timeframe than it would be on the taxing districts because, for a project in urban renewal. But, and so I gave that example, but I, I wasn't invited to their board. I didn't get a chance to talk to the rest of the group to hear exactly what other concerns were, but I answered his questions, and that was their decision.
And they were very appreciative of the conversations that you had with them.
Yeah, they said that again today. They said, you did a great job.
Okay, good.
And I think that frankly, they have one or two people specifically on their board that, you know, they weren't happy about the urban renewal, and so this was just another way to kind of, you know, pick that wound. So, not going to lose any sleep.
No, very little difference.
And they'll see the benefit at the end of the time anyway, so.
So to get to the question, are you guys, are you feeling comfortable with the, the local criteria to require green building as part of an application? And staff would administer that as we, so we'll now be administering all applications. That changed, and the time that we started coming before you for this program, the state has now been given the authority to relinquish administration to the city once we're approved. And so we would be accepting applications, reviewing them. We're figuring that process out now. We'll probably have some kind of a committee to review applications internally and then make decisions based on the facts of the project. And so we would, alongside that, have, have green building be a requirement.
And that five-year sunset?
And so on the five-year sunset, I noticed we have the July date. I mean, do you want it to be five years from when we, whenever we actually have the ordinance? Or you want to stick with the July date? Or you want to make it, you know, end of the, you know, five years, end of 2022?
Well, I think what, we came before you in July, and so that's how we, I think we wrote the resolution that, we just said July 2022. So we were thinking, as long as an application is received by July 31st or the next business day, which I think might be a Monday in that year, that it would be able to still move forward. So they would have, if they submit on July 31st of that year, and they go through the approval process, they get accepted, they would still have five years from that point forward. forward to receive abatement, but we wouldn't accept any new.
And so the process for an application for the VHDZ being deemed complete is a completely separate process from the applica, like, planning commission, planning department deeming the actual development complete? Can they do this before they do that, or do they have to do this after they do that?
They can go through the land use process first, or at the same, I mean, they could probably do it at the same time or after they've gotten a little ways through their land use process. It doesn't have to be at the same time. So them having a complete approved land use application, we're kind of looking at it separately. We're just saying, as long as, to meet our sunset date, if they've submitted to us by July 31st, we would still accept it and they could have up to 10 years of abatement. But we wouldn't accept any new applications after July 31st.
So what if they applied to us in late July 2022, but they're really not ready with their development application and that takes them another year or two to get done? Are they still going to be okay? Are we still going to...
I think we would, the way that we talked about this, yes, that we wouldn't hinge it on a complete application from a land use perspective. And they may find that they don't go forward. They could submit and things happen and their plans change when they don't go forward. But it's, it's related to a land use application, but we would be reviewing it separately. And so as long as they got that in, we would keep it kind of in the...
And is staff not worried about having some of these sitting open for years? Should we have some kind of deadline?
That's a good, the whole purpose of putting the five years on it was because we wanted people to get the development.
Right.
So let's do it before the whole thing collapses.
And so I'm just going to fly and then...
So if they can do this and then still not even have any kind of a permitting really started through planning, it seems to sort of be against what we...
It does.
...wanted it.
I don't even know how you could possibly file a VHDZ if you don't have any thing that you're even thinking about building it.
Right. Well, I mean, you could have a concept, right? But you could not be, you would have to have some amount of a concept, right? But you would not be to the point of submitting your application to planning.
Do you want to just say, along with a complete or approved land use application?
We should have some, tie it somehow to the actual application.
Partially, or some, it's got to be qualified.
Or say it has to be under construction within a year after the date or something. I mean, just something that sets a real end to it all.
Or some trigger within the land use process of, okay, once you get this far in the land use process, you're allowed to apply. So, I mean, we could have people, you guys could be going to applications like crazy for people that are just toying with the idea of building something in Milwaukee. Well, let's get in under that deadline and we've got forever to figure out what building we want to build.
And technically, I don't think that we can, they also have to be able to report back to us that they've done what they said that they would do, so that's another trigger. I mean, we'll be able to check on that, but we're, we have to, we have to kind of monitor it as well. So, yeah, I guess that's a detail that we, we could, if, this will all be part of our marketing materials and our informational flyer about the program, and we'll have steps, if you've seen the Enterprise Zone 1 that we use, and it lists exactly what you're required. There's local requirements and there's state requirements, and then it all goes back to the statutes too. But we would spell that out, and that's the piece we haven't gotten to yet. So what we're looking for today is that we've got your resolution, it's clear that you don't want this to go beyond five years. We'll take into account that we need to work with planning to figure out what that completeness connection needs to be, and then we'll write that into our local marketing materials.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like we might even want something in the ordinance that sets, you know, whether it's a, you know, whether it's tying the two together for this date or whether it's saying, no, we're going to keep them separate, and I can understand the reasons to keep them separate, but you have to be, have a completed, you know, you have to be ready to build or you have to break ground or whatever within a year of this date or something. I mean, it just seems like we need some endpoint.
I agree. Because if it's not in there, it can be construed anything.
Yeah. Yeah, just, yeah, the whole point was, we don't want people with a bunch of these, you know, preserved rights to get this, you know, who haven't, really aren't, yeah, building anything. And just want to sit on that, so.
So are you wanting to see something else before we solidify this in, or just, it's in the way we write up our implementation steps? Okay.
In the ordinance, you want it?
Yeah.
I think it should be in the ordinance, but I don't know that you need to come back. I mean, as long as you put it in the ordinance.
What kind of things would be on the application? I'm still trying to get my head around filing something when I have no concept at all. Appears as though that's an option, now having seen the application.
Well, we don't know yet.
So there's a complicated worksheet that, or it's like, it's a spreadsheet that, I have it in print here and you can't see it easily, but the applicant fills it out with all of their floor area.
So they have to be down the road.
Yeah, they know what their project is. It's, it's like a four-page, this is what the state uses, and so we're looking at adopting this exact same thing. And they fill in all their floors and square footage by floor and what's affordable versus not, and what's common space. You have to back out all the common areas that aren't eligible for all of the, all of this. And so then we would also have to have plans, so we're looking at plans to verify what they say in the spreadsheet. So they've got plans, it's just they may not have been completely through the land use process.
Right.
It probably would be timed pretty close, I would say, but it doesn't necessarily have to land.
And so when they do that and they give you, you know, we're going to have this many square feet of units and we're going to have this much square feet of common area and blah, 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 and they go through the process, then are they pretty much locked into that? Or is there some flexibility after the fact for, because designs change when you get down to the actual building, you know, when you get, you know? So is there some, some amount of, that there are allowed leeway from the numbers they psyched you there?
There, there is. This is the stuff that we're actually just getting to. We first were applying to the, to get the zone and then found out we would be administering it if we got it. So we're now working through the details of what it means to administer this locally. And so I, there's actually a regional meeting with the state person who administers this at the state level, who's coming to meet with all of the cities who have this, to talk through how he does it and what his process is. So I know that there's some kind of a review of, did you do what you say you would do? And how does it stack up with what we're actually saying would get abated? And what gets sent to the county? Ultimately, there's a final checkoff. And then that gets sent to the county to say, okay, here's what they are doing and here's how much they would get abated. And then there's a calculation that the county just automatically processes. And then they also know the fire district opted out, so we're not going to take that out. So it's fairly coordinated, how, all the specific steps aren't completely written out in my mind yet, but we, but they're all there. There's a process for how we will do it and that we'll just, we're going to tailor it after what the state does and not reinvent the wheel. And so I know that there's a part in here where we go back and double check that they actually did what they said that they would do.
Well, if they have to have that level of detail, maybe we don't have to be that worried about them sitting on rights, but I guess I still...
Is there a timeline sort of spelled out that, that when you go back and check to see, and when you say to make sure that they did what they said they were going to do, does that mean like upon project completion? And then if, so then does it go away, does the, does this go away if they haven't done what they said they were going to do?
The timeline I just have from the state is department receives a complete application, department processes an approval or a denial. Usually they work with the local jurisdiction, the planning organization to come to that decision, and then the department notifies the applicant and the county assessor. That's what's in their timeline, that's a 90-day process, but those are some of the specifics that I haven't quite gotten to about when, when and how we would trigger the review. But it's important and it needs to happen and we'll make sure that it happens. We'll be working alongside the planning department as they're getting plans in too, so...
Is there a downside for, to having just a little bit of redundancy just to make us feel better that we're actually sort of promoting something that we, you know, just to sort of make sure that we're getting the development that we want in timeline?
I wouldn't think that there's any...
Does there any downside?
Harm and redundancy of that. I mean, it would be better for our comfort zone.
Right.
Certainly let people know what's expected.
Right.
And I guess it would be better for the, also the taxing districts, right? It's not just us, it's the taxing districts. If we can let people sit on an application for three years before they build, then really our five, our, telling the taxing districts we were doing five years isn't really very...
Honest, yeah.
Yeah.
So part of the application process actually includes your timeline for your construction or rehab project, so obviously that's, could be factored in in how you evaluate the application for their readiness, if you will, in construction, and the committee could decide whether or not they provide the tax credit at that point. If it's three years out and it's July 2022, that wasn't the intent of the five-year sunset. So we would...
So maybe what the sunset, should sunset is beginning construction.
So in five years.
The date we set, whatever that date is, whether it's this date or some other date, the date should be beginning of construction. You will begin construction by this date, and then you can back the rest of it in. Because then we know they're actually going to build the building, right? They're not sitting on an application.
How long are permits good for?
Three years, right? Isn't it?
I don't know, I was just trying to think if there was a way to tie it to this land.
It used to be two.
They should be some way concurrent or they should, their dates should be tied so that we're not creating new deadlines for different things.
So I think that staff is hearing that you guys would like to tie it as much as you can so that we don't have these extending into the future. If you guys are comfortable, it sounds like that's really the last sticking point. I'd like to give staff a little time to think about what that looks like. We'll put it into the resolution, you'll have it before the vote. If you guys don't feel like you're comfortable and that we've hit it, we can pull it off and have it at a regular session instead of on consent. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. So for right now, we'll go towards consent and then if we don't hit it, you guys will just pull it, talk about it, and then you can go. Does that work?
It works.
The other element, if I could just add one more gray area to this, is that, keep in mind that this is a property tax abatement unless it's anything else in relation to the affordable housing being built, because they get it also on the land if they provide affordable housing. And one of the application criteria is first year of exemption, July 1st of whatever that year is. We could make it so that it fits within the 2022 or 2023, because typically it's for the next tax assessment, assessment cycle. That might be the easiest way, that if we know the project cannot be done to meet the tax assessment deadline of July 1st of the following year, then that's the threshold by which we pull it. That's an easier way because there's a lot of other things like certificate of occupancy, there's land, I mean, there's just so many other triggers I could, but I think the tax assessment, since that's the benefit they give, might be the easiest.
Yeah, no, I like that idea. That's cleaner than beginning construction. Cool. Good idea, thank you.
We'll keep them on July 31st.
Well, I think they're going to consider that, yeah, July 1st, 2023.
Tending on that.
Yeah. We'll write it up in our motion.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so that means the work session is adjourned. We'll be going into executive session. Council meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statute ORS 192.6602E to deliver this person's designation by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions.